We're going to resume the meeting now at 10:38. Citizens comments were over, so we are going to move forward with the agenda. Just for the public information, we offered Dr. Glasspool administrative leave and he's going to take 24 to 48 hours to consider his options. So at this time, he's on administrative leave. So Dr. Rossi is going to continue with the agenda.
Citizens comments are over. Lee. That's executive session.
Okay, let's move forward with the agenda. Do you want to make any comments?
I am no longer going to speak about this, so I don't preclude myself from anything in the future, okay?
There's a hearing that comes up. Anything that's said in public by board member could jeopardize the results of the hearing, so it's...
Dr. Glasspool was offered a chance to consider some of the things that were said tonight that you people are requesting, but Dr. Glasspool was given an opportunity to decide whether or not he would be agreeable with an administrative leave, but he wanted some time to think about it, and that was granted to him.
Okay, please, the agenda, Dr. Rossi.
Depending upon his decision...
Somebody has to get control of the meeting. Guy just has to start reading the agenda.
Just go with the agenda. This is Assistant Superintendent Dr. Rossi. Move forward with the agenda.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zucco, Chair. Recommend approval to pay GOB invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number two?
Recommend approval to designate the Oak Block Fitness Equipment as unneeded or unnecessary.
Item two. Go ahead, Guy.
Let's just go with the agenda. Is there a motion?
Which one?
Mr. Price, can you explain that that was a vote, that's a result of a vote that resulted in your...
You didn't take a vote. We tried to explain, so we'll try it again, okay? Now, please, please... No, Dr. Glasspool, prior to tonight's meeting, had already informed the board he wasn't going to attend graduation.
I didn't know.
Can you want to explain it again, Mr. Price?
Mr. Glass... Dr. Glasspool was offered an alternative for him to consider for 24 hours to 48 hours concerning taking any administrative leaves pending the rest of the investigation, and he said he would get back to us and we were going to go from there.
Okay, agenda?
Okay, please move forward with the agenda, please.
Two.
I don't know if we'll get an answer tomorrow, but we'd get an answer by the next day.
Read the agenda, Kevin.
Do you want to make a motion, Richard? Number two.
What is decided would occur, you would see the same information that you saw on the website involving Mr. Casella. The community will be informed.
Is there a motion, Rich?
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation for item number two.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, on designated Oak Block Fitness Equipment as unnecessary. And... Oak Block, unneeded and unnecessary. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Facilities Committee, met on May 10th. Mr. Zucco will make this report.
Okay. Hi, today I visited the demolition site of the Regency School Building, and the entire building is down with a few piles of debris left, and there's some equipment, and there were workers on site actually working today. I visited the old Pivik demolition site. That building is also completely down. There are a few piles of debris left, and workers were on site. The site is packed and graded. I also visited the new bus garage today. It looks like all the interior work is just about complete. The workers were installing the window seals, and the only items that I could see that were remaining for installation were the toilet fixtures outside. The gas lines are in place and connected to the building and so forth, but we're waiting on the gas company yet to complete their trunk lines and meter installations. The auction for the old bus garage site will be on Friday, this May 27th, is Friday, at the site location at 4311 Old Leechburg Road at 1:00 PM. The auction for the office building at the new transportation site at 1460 Greensburg Road is scheduled for 2:00 PM at the boardroom at the high school, and this will be a sealed bid with no minimum. On May 10th, Facility Meeting, VEBH Architects provided their pre-final report and presentation for options for replacement of the old Regency Building. On May 14th, the board voted for sending in Plan Con Part A for that option. In case it was selected, it would then be qualified for Plan Con reimbursement. And as a reminder, June 13th through Sunday, June 19th, Plum High School will be closed. USGA leased the property for this, our facilities during the US Open. No employees or residents are permitted to use, work, or park on the property at this time. Thank you. That's all I have.
Can I ask a question real quick, Mr. Zucco? I was past Pivik again today, and there looks like, over beyond where the school site's been leveled, a outdoor, like, activity gym for the kids, still standing, looks like it's in good shape from the road. Can we ask if Dr. Rossi could check on that and see if it's still usable?
I've already checked on that one, and I've checked on the one at the Regency, too.
Okay.
The determination is that whenever we subcontract that out for demolition, that and all other property there on the site becomes the property of the demolition company, I guess because of scrap value, and they take that into consideration when they prepare their bids. I already looked into it for both of those sites, and I was told that, yes, they are either accounted for, or they are not our property and we can't do anything with it. So I did look into it.
Thanks for looking into that. That seems like a terrible waste. The kids that cross the street could have used it.
Plus, some of it, also, the last time we had this, we had an issue like this, we had a swing set that was damaged or not working properly, and we have to worry about liability.
Safety, right.
So sometimes it's better just to eliminate those items and let the demolition company have them than the chance somebody getting hurt and liability issues.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we looked into it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to do the personnel agenda, since Dr. Rossi doesn't have everything up to date.
Okay.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Steve Schlock, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Heather Shaw Lucas, Special Ed Teacher at Oak Block Junior High School, effective June 3rd, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Ryan Milleron, System Administrator, effective July 30th, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Maria Devor, Food Service Worker at Plum High School, retroactive to May 15th, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Doris Drop, Food Service Worker at Plum High School, effective June 30th, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire Kelly Wilson at Elementary Spring Concert Choral Director for the 2015-16 school year at the contracted rate.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can we clarify, we're hiring her for the 15-16 school year for the spring choral concert director?
I'm sorry, I didn't have the question. Yeah, I think that's...
That's already happened? Or is it coming up?
No, they just finished.
So we're hiring her retroactively? Retro... It didn't say retroactively, that's just why I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Michael, is that true?
Is there a date on that?
Okay.
I'm fine then, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire Emily Begley, Special Ed Teacher at Pivik Elementary School, at the contracted rate, at the date to be determined by the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire Joseph Kaser, Custodian, at the contracted rate, effective June 1st, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire Douglas Brownlee, Bus Driver, at the contracted rate, effective May 25th, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one question. You know, I ask this every time we hire a bus driver. How many short are we now?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just curious what that number would be going into the summer.
What was that answer?
How many, he hasn't... How many short are we?
Not sure.
So as we go into the summer, I'd like to sort of know where we are at some point.
Well, I guess Penn Hill's laid off a bunch, so we might pick up from...
So we'll be okay.
So we might be okay. Might have a bunch. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire the following substitute bus aides at the contracted rate, effective May 25th, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to hire the following individuals for the summer activity program on Mondays through Thursdays, June 6th through June 30th.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to, for the unpaid leave for the following employees, Tanya Tost and Tracy Depcon.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two additional motions that were mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Is it here? Recommend approval to retain Michael Levin and Levin Legal Group to perform legal services relative to the investigation of current and former employees named in the Allegheny County Grand Jury Report, including formal and informal employee hearings that may be required or as a result of the investigation. Legal fees will be compensated at the rate of $170 to $190 per hour.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Mr. Gene Marasini.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like...
It's effective on...
Effective September 9th.
It's effective September 9th, 2016. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Retirement.
Retirement.
It says resident. It's retirement.
It's retirement.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank Mr. Marasini for the years of service, his dedicated service. He's been a dedicated employee. He's, many times, he's gone above and beyond the call of duty in many cases, and I wish you and your wife a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you very much.
He'll still be here till September, so he'll still be around for a little while longer.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move forward to the Education Committee.
Great. I thought I... Dr. Rossi knows this one.
Education Committee, Mrs. Susan Caldwell, Chair. Recommend approval of the waterfront learning courses and platforms for the 2016-17 school year as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following overnight field trip requests as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that... Oh, go ahead, you want to read those, Dr. Rossi?
The GLA for the Jefferson Award Ceremony and the varsity cheerleaders.
Thank you. On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept $100 donation for Mrs. Carol Baskerville, Holiday Park parent, for classroom supplies.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number four, recommend approval to accept the agreement with Hooton Midland Harcourt, Go Math, Grade 7 and 8 textbook for a three-year subscription as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation with open door discussion, of course.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, we were, we postponed our Education Committee and agreed to finish it this evening, as we had a emergency come up during our Education Committee that we, the board wished to address with the DC trip. So we didn't get to completely finish our discussion on where we wanted to go with our 7th and 8th grade contract for our math series. So Dr. Rossi and the math leadership had presented a one-year, three-year, and five-year option to the board. He made a comparison chart and got that to the board since then for the board review. We put this on here as a three-year, thinking that was the middle of the road for the board to decide as we go forward and review our comprehensive plan. So if anyone is, has any discussion whether they'd rather go with the one-year or five-year, feel free to, we can continue our discussion from the Education Committee on that now, or if they have any questions for Dr. Rossi.
I do have a question, Dr. Rossi. The subscription, is that upfront three years, we pay yearly?
Upfront.
We have to pay three years.
For instance, if you choose a three-year bundle, you pay that on July 1st, and you're good for three years.
For three years. Okay, so it's going to go on next year's budget, then?
It'll go on next year's budget, correct.
And it's substantial savings from what we had in the budget. We had budgeted $54,000, and this, if we choose the three-year, that will be $22,770.
That's correct.
It's a nice cost savings, and from what we were able to see at the brief presentation, it looks like a great series. I know Mr. Colletta said he did some homework on it as well as myself, and Dr. Rossi and the math department includes our use of our iPads with workbooks available as well.
Yes, that's what we realized, a few savings.
And you've been helping with parents at home.
Absolutely.
Right. And it had, the workbook was impressive. It has a QR code on the pages in the workbook, and I, we even scanned it with our cell phone, some of the board members during the presentation, and the tutorial props up right on your cellphone. Kids have their iPads at home, so it seems like very forward-thinking program. So are the board members happy with the three-year bundle?
That's fine.
Yeah, it's something that's desperately needed, 7th and 8th grade, so that's, we have to do it. I think we do.
Great.
Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of English Language Arts, Grade 9, Summer Reading Change. I will always write back, "One Letter Changed Two Lives," as presented.
I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept $5,001.49, $5,001.49 in Plum Foundation grants as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank the Plum Foundation for all their work and fundraising efforts as seen in the attachment and posted online with our meeting agendas, the different teachers who have requested funds for different items to the Plum Foundation as grants are all itemized on there, so it's very interesting. All different levels of education, K through 12, are able to use the funds at the foundation so graciously as willing to earn and raise for our kids. So I wanted to be sure to publicly thank them. I think they have some fundraising events coming up this summer, I believe, a golf outing, so that will be on the webpage.
I believe it's on June 11th.
I think I spelled it right. Yeah. Go check the webpage for that.
The Education Committee met on May 17th, 2016. Mrs. Caldwell will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Rossi. I did want to publicly thank everyone who reached out to help with the Washington DC trip when we came upon an emergency situation last week. Our tour company was not able to provide the buses, and we were, Dr. Glasspool was notified at about 2:30 in the afternoon, I believe, from one of the teacher leaders on the trip. He did work diligently to arrange alternate transportation, tried various, various sources to get transportation for our children for this very, very enlightening trip to our nation's capital. In the end, he wasn't able to secure outside transportation, so I wanted to publicly thank the bus drivers in our district who stepped up and Dr. Glasspool arranged for them to take our newest buses on the trip to make sure that the trip could actually occur for our students. We needed six buses to supplement the few that the tour company was able to provide. I wanted to thank the drivers, Bob Dugan, Steve Hoover, Tim Olzuski, Kathy Panavsky, Don Plaskin, and Don Wilcox. Without their last-minute service, they agreed to do this probably around dinnertime on Tuesday, and the trip left at 6 o'clock the next morning. So they agreed to step up, drive our kids to DC and drive them around DC, put their lives on hold, so thank you to them. And all our teachers, too, really stepped up, our teacher leadership on the trip to help handle the difficult transportation circumstances. As you can imagine, it's not easy to get around Washington DC with a large group of 6th graders and parents, so thank you to those folks. Other committee report, the Elementary STEM Challenge is May 27th. Plum Library, Laura Mason came from the library board and gave us a presentation regarding a program that they're going to be initiating, partnering and promoting vocations. It's going to be a once-a-month program, and the library board just approached us at the school district to see if we would help them communicate this to our student body. They felt it would be appropriate for junior high and senior high students. They're going to attempt to schedule one or two professionals to come in during the evenings, probably monthly, to speak about their careers, their professions, their trades, to try and give our young adults and high school students, and actually, anyone in the community will be invited to explore career options. So we agreed to do that, and we'll be reaching out through our IT department to communicate to our students that library career program. We also wanted to congratulate the Air Force Junior ROTC. They have earned the Distinguished Unit Award for the academic year 2015-2016, so congratulations to the commanders and all the students involved, as well as parents. Great time commitment.
I just want, eighth year in a row they've received, I think they've received this award every year that they've, we've had the ROTC program at Plum High School.
Mr. Daldel, would it be possible to invite them to a board meeting to acknowledge that? I don't know if we want to do that in June, or if they're busy with vacations, if we could do that maybe August or September.
The kids will be out of school.
Something to look at, because I know they work so hard for that. We do acknowledge our athletes. I know we have many programs in the schools with our, you know, fine arts and educational, but when you say it's eight years, I just think it would be nice to acknowledge them.
It's been every year, and only about 10% of the units in the country receive this award, and we've received it every year that they've been here at Plum High School, so it's a fantastic accomplishment from, for the ROTC program.
Highly commendable. Thank you. We also want to congratulate Holiday Park, Regency Park and Center for receiving recognition for being digitally certified schools through Common Sense Media. And this is the certification they work on, different grade levels. It teaches students, parents, families how to be a good digital citizen online and in educational venues. So congratulations to those schools. It's a lot of hard work put into that to earn that certificate. I'm just trying to remind everyone that June 2nd is graduation, and to wrap up for the Education Committee, going forward, we are now upon, coming up upon our comprehensive plan mid-year review. The mid-year review will be due, so we will be reconvening the Plan Committee to review the educational plan for grades K through 12. We will include, and also, within this plan, we will do an examination of a 6th through 8th grade educational model. This will begin in June. During this evaluation, we will also be taking a look at aspects, all aspects of our comprehensive plan, but items that the board had already begun to consider and will be included in this are the physical education requirements, English Language Arts, and credits necessary to graduate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are these for next school year?
Well, it's our comprehensive plan, which is a six-year plan, and we're due for a mid-year review. That's PDE, correct, Dr. Rossi?
That is correct.
So we're due for the mid-year review, and it's time to reconvene the committee. The committee was already in place, I believe.
Yes, there's a committee.
Mrs. Gallagher's on it.
There's a committee.
And a couple board members, and so we're going to reconvene that committee and, as required, but it's a perfect opportunity for us as a district to bring many of our concerns that we've been wanting to address into this comprehensive plan review.
Again, if I'm looking for assistance for next school year, these types of changes.
Well, that's why we're doing it now. I think it's due for next school year.
Yeah, I have a training in June, so I'll have more information at that time.
Okay, great.
She probably wants to know if you're going to make any changes this year for the budget, right, Michelle?
Oh, I don't think there's, I don't believe there will be time to do anything for the fall. Students have made their course selections, so this will be going forward. Thank you.
Finance Committee, Mr. Sal Calala, Chair. Delinquent real estate taxes received from Andrews &amp; Price for March 2016, total collected Recommend approval of treasuries report and bill payments for April 2016 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to adopt the Homestead-Farmstead Exclusion Resolution as presented.
That's being removed from the agenda for next month.
Next month.
Recommend approval to accept A.J. Gallagher Company to bind insurance coverage for the twenty sixteen-seventeen fiscal year with the cyber liability coverage included as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a chance to review the cyber liability policy that they recommended, and it's very good. It's, it's worth, it's worth the money that they, for the coverage that we're getting for that.
Very good.
It's about twelve thousand dollars a year.
Yeah. Any relationship, Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Good. There's no nepotism here. Thank you. Yeah, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend adopting the twenty sixteen-seventeen proposed final, final general fund budget with anticipated revenues of sixty-five million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine, and expenditures totaling sixty-four million, six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixteen, subject to change upon final passage. Administration is authorized to make the proposal, proposed final budget available for public inspection and give public notice of intent to adopt.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Dahl-Dell, I think the word preliminary should be inserted, so there's no confusion that this is not the final. It's the preliminary final.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the board okay with that, insertion of preliminary?
Yes.
Okay.
We, are we on discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
This budget was taxing at least. And the community has to realize, everybody in this school district, including employees and taxpayers, that there is a structural deficit in this school district. And it's significant. And we were able to balance the budget, but the reality is, next year, this budget could start four million dollars in the hole. So as a board, moving forward, you need to have a long-range plan and what you plan to do to reduce expenses. And that has to be for next year, period. There's no other way of getting around this. Or else you're going to go the same way as a local school district went. We have to have a long-range plan. I think Mr. Dahl-Dell said he wanted a five-year plan. So we'll look at a five-year plan, but we absolutely have to do that. The district can't run on when expenditures exceed revenues the way they do. We were able to do that using some creative things this year, but it will cost us some money. So I, I say this, that I, the other day at the finance meeting, I gave a list of things for every committee chairman to look at. I'll restate those and send those out to everybody. But it's not business as usual in this school district, and people just have to remember them. Difficult times.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes?
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Colletta?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl-Dell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Rossler?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schlaugh?
No.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Because if Paul's going to interrupt you, I just want to bring something to your attention. I just walked outside to leave, and this gentleman from Channel Four let me know. While you guys were in the middle of a meeting and Dr. Glasspool was getting an earful, he was retweeting baseball scores.
He wasn't in a meeting with us. Just, we were meeting ourselves. We were meeting ourselves as a board.
We weren't meeting by ourselves. We weren't executing.
During the meeting, when, when, when parents, during public comments, he was tweeting, he just showed it to me on his phone. He was tweeting baseball scores.
Okay, I don't think that's relative to this meeting, in citizens' comments or...
I think it's very relative, because it just went out on the eleven o'clock news. So it's pretty relative to all you right now, because while he was getting an ear beating, that's what he thought was important.
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Recommend authorizing and directing the underwriter, Banning and Scattergood Incorporated Bond Council, Dinsmore Insurance, Solicitor and Administration to make all necessary preparations for a five million general obligation bond Series A of twenty sixteen for Peasars Pension, and a one million, eighty thousand general obligation bond Series B for purchasing fourteen new school buses.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
I have discussion. This didn't come this way from committee. This isn't how I recall it, a committee. We had three separate items in the budget were presented. We had the Peasars obligation, general obligation bond. We had purchasing fourteen new buses, and we had a seven million dollar loan for construction.
Was that included with that?
I don't, I don't.
No, seven million, we didn't approve.
That was part of the budget, that's part of the budget.
No.
I will not vote to, to take the general obligation bond on Peasars to buy fourteen new buses, because I am not in favor of purchasing fourteen new buses when we had a four million dollar sway in our general fund. To the negative. So I'm a no.
If we need buses.
Those are buses for over ten years. We could purchase seven or five, which I've asked for the numbers and haven't gotten them yet, and our buses will be safe. That was a long-term plan to purchase fourteen to cover us for ten years. As to cover us for ten years. I thought it would, I...
Maybe Jim can speak to it.
I would, I would be, I would be glad to look at eight. I don't think we're in a position to purchase fourteen buses for a ten-year span with our budget right now.
I think, I think if we need a certain amount because of safety, we need to purchase those buses.
Right. We weren't told that we needed fourteen. We were told that we needed eight.
I thought you came back and said fourteen.
Okay, excuse me. Do we want to keep this motion all one, or do we want to divide it?
I'm surprised it was combined, because it was not presented this way at Finance Committee when we were at our last meeting.
I thought when we were borrowing, we were borrowing everything.
We can break it apart, but in order, in order to get the discount on the borrowing, we want to do to do the two together.
Correct.
That's what we want to do. That's why it was probably made one motion. You can separate the motions.
Separate them.
You can separate them. But, you know, so if we want to do that, we can separate them.
Do you want to make that motion?
But you still want to be able to do the bond issuance at the same time, so the issuance costs are not, you don't have additional addition, an issuance cost. So we can do that. So...
It was my understanding the bond issuance was to help with balancing the budget, not to purchase fourteen new buses.
Well, there's two different, there's two issues.
So if you want to make a motion to separate them, I'm fine.
There's two issues. We can do it separately, or we can do it together. I made a motion, we, the motion has been seconded, so we have to have discussion about that. Now, the buses.
We could amend the motion.
Yeah, I know.
We can bring a motion to separate, and if it's seconded, then you vote on whether or not to separate.
Well, yeah, let's, let's, let's discuss this motion first, and then we can talk about breaking the motion apart. We all got a list of the longevity of the buses in our fleet. Ten buses have one year left. I think six or eight have two years left. We all got that email from Scott Mergen. So we need actually more than fourteen buses if we're going to keep our fleet somewhat current. Now, people, and you take a look at this. If people say we should buy four a year, well, four a year at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the same as buying fourteen over five years. So the cost is the same. But the issue is, is this. The issue is this. How many do we need to keep our students safe in our fleet current? That becomes the issue. And it's real simple. You need to replace the ten that you have with one year plus four that only have two years of service on. So...
And we weren't on a...
You do what you want. But the reality is, you're going to do it this year, or you're going to do it next year. And if you do it next year and you have to borrow the money, you're going to have issuance costs for a bond.
And I think we weren't on a schedule to buy buses every year, correct?
Correct.
So now it's a catch-ups, and if it's unsafe and they need the buses, we need to buy the buses.
Well, we were told eight. How did eight turn to ten? How did that turn to fourteen?
I heard fourteen at the last meeting.
At the last meeting, but prior to that, when we asked which buses.
Because he came back and said.
Boy, it kept growing, and I don't appreciate that. I went to truth the first time.
It wasn't, so I don't know where you, you keep getting all this stuff confused.
I'm not.
The schedule was right in front of me. There was one bus that had zero life left. There's ten buses that have one-year life. There's ten buses that have two-year life. The eight buses that we talked about, with the eight that they confirmed will probably not pass, or the state police have to inspect our buses now, said those eight for sure will not even pass inspection. That's eight dead ones right off the bat. Now, if you don't want to consider the other ones that are next to the end of life, that's fine. But I was down there today, and I was looking at them, and I was looking at them, and they were talking about how much money it's going to cost to keep those last buses, those ones that are fourteen years and thirteen years. How much money do you want to spend on one of those buses to keep it running for two or three more years versus the cost savings of, you know, better efficiency, better mileage, less maintenance, less repairs on the new buses? Scott did a whole analogy with it. He showed us, showed it to us. I don't know where you're getting all your figures.
What you just said, eight.
Eight that would not pass inspection, floors are rotted out.
That was the absolute minimum we needed to replace was eight. That's where the eight came from. The fourteen will bring us up to where we need to be. You're going to lower the age of the, the average age of the fleet from ten years to about six and a half years. You probably won't have to buy another bus for another three or four, even five years. With the increased improvement in maintenance, the warranties for technology on new buses, the fuelage savings on new buses. Over the course of the seven years or the ten years, you're going to save enough money to have paid for probably three, maybe four buses. So that's where the fourteen came from.
And if we have a bus garage, we need buses. I mean, I'd rather buy new buses than buy used buses.
The other thing you can do is if...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying buy what we need now, till we get out of this financial crisis, and look at it next year. We need to buy the additional four. Actually, six. We need, we, we absolutely, we need, we believe we absolutely need eight. They haven't been inspected.
But you're still playing catch-up. You're still trying to...
But we're, we're making an effort, which is more than's been done in the recent past.
But if you get the fourteen buses, you get ahead of yourself a little bit for a couple of years.
Well, we need to get ahead on some educational materials too, though. As educational chair, I have to push for money for education.
Don't forget, we need to get a school.
Yeah, well, listen, I forget, you got to get in there first to educate them.
Right. Well, we need a school to put them in.
I, I'm looking at this money that we're going to borrow, and I, I understand why we have to do it, and I'm okay with it. And I, I want whatever buses we have to, to make sure our kids are safe. I have a really big concern. We were given a bunch of numbers from Bond Council about borrowing to build as well. And, you know, we have the issue of the Regency kids are still homeless. And we haven't, we're not still addressing that, but we're addressing extra buses to get through a couple, three more years. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with saying I'll vote to borrow this money, and we have given staff no direction about an audit. And this is not pointing a finger, saying anyone's done anything wrong. This is saying, look, we have to get to the same number here internally at the school district that the tax collector has and that the county's going to have. We have to do that. That is our due diligence as board members. We, we have to do that. If we borrow this and then say that's a summer project, or we'll get to that in the fall, and now we have a whole lot of other things to deal with this summer as well, I, I want to get on top of this and give staff direction to say, let's audit ourselves. Let's audit our tax collector. And if we have to go downtown and audit our records downtown, we have to do that too. We have to know what we're dealing with. So next year, we don't look at this and go, oh, how do we get to that number again? We have to know the real number, and whatever that is, we have to move forward. We have, Jean is leaving us. He needs that number to pass on to the next person. We don't need to deal with that in the fall when we have to deal with the budget. So I, I'm looking at it and saying, I will vote for this, but I want tonight to give staff direction on how to go find the answers to those questions, because to me, we're putting a Band-Aid on it. I, I understand we have to do it, and I don't want to take anything away from our children, away from the classroom, so we have to do this. And I don't want kids to get to school unsafe, but I want kids to have a school at the same time. And we're not addressing this stuff. So I'm okay voting for this, but I'm also asking for a conversation that I asked for before about giving staff the correct direction. And now, I have a really big concern as to what our summer looks like. And with Jean leaving in September, I have a really big concern, and I'd rather we get on this now and get on top of this. Jean, you leaving tonight put a whole other process in, in my head. And I really, I want to make sure that that number is set, that we are ready to go for whoever comes in after you.
I have a question on the email that came out dated May twentieth about projected cost savings pursuant to proposed purchase of the fourteen new buses. Item A three, summer repairs and manpower savings. Scott would reduce the labor pool from ten to seven, thus, thus saving approximately two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars with payroll taxes times three, or seven thousand dollars. Or the summer, are there, is there, how does that work?
Their drivers, they show up so many days. They do the patching of the seats, painting of the floors, cleaning of the glass. They wish and wax the vehicles. It's not the mechanics. Mechanics are working on state inspections. So this is a pool of drivers that are paid a lesser amount than their driving rate. He budgeted so many hours for them to do that. And by the fact that most of this time is dedicated to these fourteen buses in this example, that would go away, because the new buses won't need anything. That's where that number came up.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't do the five million dollars, Michelle, then you cannot do number five past preliminary budget. Can't do it.
I understand, so I'm asking us to give direction.
What I'm saying, what I'm, let me finish. And so that, that's, that's how you have to pa, balance the budget. That leaves you with about one point one million dollars in your general fund moving forward. But the structural deficit I said is going to be four million dollars beginning of next year. So the board has to come up with money between now and the beginning of next year. Not the year this coming September, but the following. It gives you a year to work on it. But you need a long-range plan. And if you look at some of the neighboring school districts, that's how they got into trouble. They didn't have a long-range plan on how to pay their debt and how to do their operations. So we need to do that. You can't, it's, you know, it's a finger in the bike, dike unless we do that. The buses, the one point eight million dollars, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. I mean, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars a year to put our kids on new buses, which means we'd have twenty-six new buses in a two-year period. That's, that's, that's a small price to pay.
I agree. No, I agree.
You know.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but I'm asking for his direction. We need to give staff direction.
The audit has to be done in June. After we got the budget done, we said we would do it in June, and we'll do that. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, if the board doesn't want to borrow the money, then the board has to come up with four million dollars of cost savings tonight.
I just said I'm not opposed to borrowing the money. I'd like to tonight give staff some direction to, I have a very big concern that June's going to be a little bit busy. And, and we all said, we, we said we would do this in June. Jean's leaving in September, on September ninth, and I, I have a concern that the summer is going to get away from us on a variety of things. And I would rather give some direction this evening and set the tone for what we're going to audit and how we're going to do it. So that way, if something comes up, it takes an extra month, we're ready to go. That's what's fair to the new business manager.
That's fair. But what I would suggest is that although we approve this tonight, I would not act on this until you finalize your district-wide facility study to see how much additional dollars, if you need additional dollars, and do the issuance all at once. You can save a lot of money.
So we can approve this, not with a...
I wouldn't execute it, I wouldn't execute it until you finalize your district-wide facilities.
Yeah, yeah, let, let me jump in there for a second.
Okay.
This is simply telling people to get prepared.
Right.
You still have to formally adopt a debt resolution.
Right.
With, with, with a vote down the road whenever this would be occurring.
Yeah.
And if you change your mind at that point, so be it.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So that, you know, moving forward, I mean, we still have to do the debt resolution. We've got a lot of work to do with it. But I wouldn't do it until you decide on your district-wide facility study on what you plan to do. Because if you, whatever you do, if you need additional money, then I would borrow it all at one time.
I also have a concern about the fourteen buses. I'm a little uncomfortable buying all those buses all once if, if they're not all necessary. I mean, if you look at our fleet and the lifespan of the buses, on average, we would expect to need about four buses a year. And I, I, I think we need to get in that, that, that mode where just, every year we're replacing, you know, four buses or so just to kind of keep our fleet active, rather than having coming up the situation where all of a sudden we need, you know, fourteen buses and then go a couple of years... and then go a couple of years, oh, we've got all this extra money, then three, four years down the road, we'll get to buy another twelve buses and, you know. I'd rather just get in the pattern of just every year just buying, you know, the buses we need.
If, if you replace the fourteen now, then you, then you're caught up to where you should be. Then when things straighten out a little bit in a year, in two years, three years, then you can go on to your four buses a year schedule. But the other thing we talked about, it, it's a possibility, is getting a bus washing machine, which is about $25,000, which would include an undercarriage wash, which it, by keeping them clean like that, you'd extend the life by probably two or three years a bus. So instead of looking at fifteen years, you're looking at seventeen, maybe eighteen years. You know? So.
The other thing is, you know, if we need eight buses now, maybe we can buy, you know, eight buses now, then maybe next May, we can buy the other six, still within the budget. That way they're kind of year apart, so maybe those extra six can last another year beyond these eight or something like that. So we don't have to buy all eight, fourteen at once unless there's a huge savings in doing that. But that might be another option. Then next year we'll have six new buses ready for school. That might be a possibility.
In order to buy six or eight buses next year, we'd have to hit the powerball.
That's what I was going to ask you, Sal, we're borrowing the money for this now.
We just don't have the money to do that.
No, I'm, well, we're borrowing, I'm saying buy eight with this money, then another six next May, it's still in the same budget.
Well, you're still going to borrow 1.08? Is that what you plan on doing? I mean, because you're going to borrow the money to do that. Or you could lease them. If you use a capital lease, I think it was more expensive, slightly more expensive to do a capital lease.
We're still going to buy fourteen buses in this fiscal year, but we're going to stagger it from eight in the beginning and six at the end.
I don't know how you can do that, Kevin. I mean, we've got 15.1% of our fleet, ten buses that have one year left on their lifespan.
Okay, then, well-
That's ten right there.
That's one year, then we can buy the six next May, that'll, that'll cover the buses that are going to be-
That's a good idea.
Where are you going to get the money?
We're borrowing the money.
You're going to borrow it now, why wouldn't you just buy it now? I mean, put the kids on new buses, that's what you want.
They probably could give you some parts for the other buses.
You don't know what's going to happen between now and then. Then you have GOB funds. A roof could cave in, I'm just saying. I've been there with the furnace and-
Well, do you want to keep this motion whole or do you want to divide it? Anybody want to divide it?
Well, whatever, somebody's got to make a motion to divide it.
No? Any other discussion?
I like Kevin's idea, I think it's a good idea.
Well, we could still do that, I think.
And which, in which case we could.
So we're going to borrow the money and then not buy all the buses at one time, we're just going to wait six months?
Why don't we borrow the money and pay back the Regency fund with a ten-year note that we are supposed to do? Because right now, it's a thirty-year note on ten-year buses.
Well, it wasn't a Regency fund, it was a GOB fund.
Well, you know, if you wait a year, it's like a car. I mean, these models change. So next year, you may be paying more for buses than you are now. I mean, it's just like a car, their models change. I know I go buy cars once every eight years. You know, it goes up.
I just think if you need the buses, I mean, there's-
We need, we need eight. We need eight.
If you're going to borrow the money-
We need eight, don't, I don't want the news to be misled.
Eight are the bare minimum, saying those ones are going to be dead, they won't pass inspection, take them off the lot. That doesn't mean the other ones still don't need replaced. I was down there, one of those rear bumpers that fell off, $1,500. How many rear bumpers do we want to put on old buses that are going to last two years?
And that was one of the eight, correct?
I would assume yes. But I mean-
We have a bus garage, we need to make sure we have good buses.
If we don't get the kids safe to school. I mean, that's, that's our first, I mean, first thing in the morning, four or five o'clock in the morning, there's bus drivers showing up. There's people clearing the, you know, the snow so they can get down and, and our guys can get out there. And the, the first kids our students see in the morning are the last people they see in the afternoon and evening. I don't know what I can tell you. I, I'll, I'll do anything and I'll go with anything anybody wants, but I don't want to hear later if a child gets hurt or if a bus doesn't work or something's not up to safety and then we're, you know. I said, it's been mentioned, what's, what's the cost of a person or a child or, or a liability suit? You want to get them there safe and sound.
And they transfer our kids to games, I mean, it's a lot more than-
Well, I agree, and I, listen, I, I'm going to tell you, I, I rode a bus for the field trip. And I watched two kindergarten, incoming kindergarten-age kids, no coats, no backpacks, no instruments, no anything, get in those seats. And when they put a third kid in, no coat, no backpack, no instruments, no anything else. They're, what, I forget whatever Mr. Nysley was saying, the, the word for basically put your butt in the seat. But whatever it was, was very cute and, and it worked. But the reality is those kids were hanging off, that's kindergarten kids. I'm fine, if we have buses that are going to keep going in our fleet and we may have, be able to get more drivers, we need to reduce the size of these buses too. And the amount of kids we have on these buses. I know the law says X amount per bus, per seat. I watched it for myself, I took pictures of it, and one of our newer buses of three kindergarten kids, again, in just jeans and her T-shirts getting on a bus and they didn't, they barely fit and some of them didn't fit. Three kids to a seat. So if we're going to do this and we have buses that are going to still be in our fleet that are usable, then I say we shorten the amount of people that are on a bus. And I think we, we should be having that conversation if all of a sudden, eh, Penn Hill's laid off bus drivers, we're going to be good. Okay? And if we're going to have buses that are still good in our fleet and are fixable and workable, okay, then let's use them.
You're saying add, buy more buses and add routes?
Yep, that's what it's going to, I mean, if we're going to have buses that are still good and we're going to buy fourteen, and again, I'm not opposed to buying these and I want kids to get to school safely. But I saw from my, I can show you pictures, I saw it from my own eyes in one of our brand-new buses with the cameras and everything else. And these kids were barely fitting, three kindergarten kids in a seat. Now add winter coats, backpacks, and anything else.
Are we doing that on a daily basis? I mean, it's not good for a field trip, I agree.
The buses are not overcrowded.
We are doing that on a daily basis.
They could-
I'm hearing two different things than Mr. Emergent's not here.
The one that was there because that was a special function. But the bus scheduling, the buses are not overcrowded.
But there's people that could say there are three kids to a seat in many of these buses. And so what I'm saying is if we're buying knowing we're going to be okay for a few years, then reduce the number of kids on these buses. I'm sorry, but, I mean, when you look at somebody carrying a backpack and an instrument and it's the winter time and they have coats and they have snow boots on and they have shoes hanging on, think that over for a second and you're going to put three of those to a seat because that's what the law says we can do.
So is that going to depend on whether we change the routes, whether you're going to buy the buses?
No, what I'm saying is I'm okay doing this, but we have to, we're not thinking clearly with some of this, like, okay, we're going to do this and move on. No, the same thing as I say about, I want the audit because I want to know the number and I want to make sure it's right for the next person. Same deal with these buses, if we're going to have buses, don't just get rid of them. If they still work, reduce the number of children on a bus. And maybe we look at and say, "Okay, two years, maybe not three or four, we add more buses." So we keep that consistent because that is part of safety. When I have parents telling me their kid is falling into the aisle or there's no real place for them to sit, that's a problem for me. And we're having this conversation and really the true need of buses that won't pass inspection are eight buses. But yet we know long-term we're going to need more in another couple of years. So we're saying it's less expensive to borrow the money and get the fourteen buses. We still have buses in our fleet then that are usable and that are good and we ought to be looking at that because that is part of children's safety.
I don't disagree with that at all. However, I'm not a fan of eight buses, I'm fourteen buses.
But, you know, here's, here's the issue that I have. I sit here and when you get to your athletic committee, Michelle, you have thirty coaches. Those thirty coaches cost us $113,000 for thirty coaches so that our kids can play sports. Yet we won't spend $169,000 a year to put our kids on new buses that are safer.
I didn't say I opposed that. We are getting new buses that are safer.
Well, I'm saying-
Until next year.
Well, you need fourteen. You need fourteen, I have it right in front of me, right here.
No, to be safe, we need eight, Sal.
We'd, no, you need ten. You need ten, then we have one more year.
Well, I'm hearing, I heard eight. Rich said eight and we were told eight at the meeting.
I think there's a difference between you need or you want right now.
And that's where we went down to a bare bones budget, that's the reason we went down to a bare bones.
But, but Rich is saying eight is what we truly need, but we probably want a couple more to have because when the bus breaks down-
I do, but I think we have to visit that next year because of budget constraints.
Well, there was also a bus today that didn't get, the Regency kids didn't get picked up, like, whatever happened, their bus broke down, I don't, I don't know.
They're on a new bus.
Again, I'm not opposed to these, but I'm, I'm asking you all to be open-minded and have true conversation, not in two months from now when we can't do anything about it, but now or not tonight, but, I mean, I'm saying now, like in the next maybe fifteen, thirty days, where we say, "Let's, let's do something with these bus routes. Let's look at our buses that are at almost capacity." Because I'm not going to vote for something that I, we're just going to, hey, those are good, throw them out, we got our bus routes good and set to go. I'm not okay with that, knowing that, again, I personally rode the bus and saw, saw it from my own eyes.
I guess, I guess the thing that I'm stuck on, I'm sorry, Steve, is we, if Sal has a way to finance these buses, we can get fourteen buses. You know, if Michelle wants to change the routes and make it less students on a bus, we can do that in the future. I just don't know what options we have in the future. I mean, if we're going to do a five-year projected budget, are we going to have money next year for buses? Buy the buses, if we need the buses. Steve, were you going to say something?
The eight buses originally talked about, as Rich said earlier, won't pass inspection.
Probably, he said.
No, they said, they said, no, I'm saying-
The state police come and do the inspection. Mechan, they're mechanics, not magicians down there.
Right.
And those eight will not pass inspection. It's already pretty much that simple. So you, you need those eight just to get rid of the, the old ones. But all you can do is use them for parts, maybe.
Yes, they're going to trade them in.
Yeah.
There's trade-ins, value is traded.
The other six that we're lo, you know, looking to get the four, to bring in the fourteen is going to, now you can, we lose, you still have your fleet. You still have some spares, if you will, that you can use if something happens. But the other thing, if, if you're looking at it, is a driver shows up for work and he's worried about his start, bus even starting. And if the thing don't work, then you got to worry about trying to get it started and everything else. If you've got fourteen brand-new buses along with the ones we, the new ones we just purchased recently, you, you sort of take that factor out because you're not going to be worried about, geez, my bus going to start this morning.
I just think it's really important to have a, if we have a bus garage, we should have really nice buses for our kids and safe buses for our kids. And nitpicking one or two buses here and there. Buy the buses.
I guess the issue becomes, you want to keep the vote, the buses separate from the borrowing against the Peasars or you want to keep it together?
I, I was fine with the GOB for Peasars pension as it was presented. And it was presented to us as a means to balance, to help balance the budget. Now it's connected to the buses. I'm fine with, with the GOB obligation for Pe, for Peasars, but-
Can I make a motion to separate the two, please?
Thank you.
That needs a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to separate the, the motion. Any discussion?
Yes, does this mean we're borrowing twice?
No, just splitting this motion in two parts.
Yeah, right now it's to determine whether you're going to continue to proceed with this total package.
The total package, we're paying twice.
No, 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 it, I, I think some are saying that they don't want to vote for the portion that has to do with the buses. And if there aren't enough people to include that, then you wouldn't combine, you'd only be looking at proceeding with one bond issue for the Peasars. But if there are enough people vote for both, then it'd be foolish not to combine it for cost reasons.
Okay, are we on discussion now? Yeah, we are in discussion. Okay, again, I was down there this morning.
Wait, your, your motion right now is to separate it.
Well, I thought there was discussion on that motion. The motion to separate. If we motion to separate, the motion, the first part will be the, the five million dollar bond issue and the second part will be for the $1,080,000 for the, the buses.
Right, you're turning it into Series A of 2016, a separate motion for Series B.
So all's in favor to separate the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Roll call.
Where does the separation come here? Mrs. Caldwell?
I went, I went to have Mr. Price clarify how we're going to word that to separate, when we separate it, how's it going to be separated?
If you, if you notice, the motion refers to a Series A, which was part of the presentation at, I believe, your finance committee meeting.
That's the five million.
That will be the five million. It also included at the presentation a Series B, which would be a general obligation bond for school buses. There was another one, you may remember, concerning construction, but didn't have a consensus to move forward. So these motions will be, after they're separated, you will vote for Series A, five million, then a separate vote on Series B, one, one million eighty thousand.
And then you also stated that if there are enough votes on each, that it, we could make another motion to combine it.
Well, that, that's how it would be done, you'd be doing them at once to save costs whenever the debt resolution comes up.
So we don't really need to vote to put them back together, they would just be technical.
That's correct. But you, the important thing is that you're voting on two separate motions at this point. Well, we don't know that because we have to do a roll call on it because there were no votes.
Would, would we, would doing them separately have a different effect on that cost, I think Sal said it was, or it wouldn't?
No, no. First, both pass, then whenever the bond issue comes out, you're going to want to have it be done. It's still going to be a separate series for each, but to do them all at once, the two of them at once, saves you money on the issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Okay? You're welcome.
The roll call, please.
Hey, this is the motion to separate.
This is the motion to separate.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Colella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Rossler?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Schlock?
No.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Mr. Zucco?
No.
Motion passes.
So now, now you are to a motion to do the general obligation bond, Series A of 2016 for Peasars pension.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
So now we're dividing?
Do it again, or?
Yeah, he, he's got a motion, that, that's your separate motion you're voting on.
I'll second. Wait, can you read that motion? Because it's half now, right? So you're going to go from-
So they're combined.
Recommending, you're going to go from the word, recommending the word pension.
Do you second it? Do you second it?
No, Michelle did.
Michelle did.
It's recommend authorizing and directing the underwriter, bond counsel, solicitor, and administration to make all necessary preparations for a five million general obligation bond, which would be designated Series A of 2016 for Peasars pension.
Period.
Period.
Any discussion?
No.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, the backside of the motion that was split would be recommend authorizing and directing the underwriter, bond counsel, solicitor, and administration to make all necessary preparations for a $1,080,000 general obligation bond, Series B, for purchasing fourteen new school buses.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second.
With the motion and a second, any discussion?
Like I said previously, I want to have enough buses to keep the children safe for this year. So I would be willing to go with eight or ten. As we've been told, we need to keep the children, we need that many buses to keep the children safe for the 2016, '17 school year. And then we can revisit the additional, it would be four to six buses going forward. And generally, in the past, we had done five a year, so we would be doing eight to ten, I'd be willing to do that. I think fourteen, with our budgetary constraints and thinking what we need educationally, we can get the other four next year. Because we know that we have eight to, if we get eight to ten, the children would still have safe transportation this year.
Depending on cost, though, we could lose money next year too, right? So that's another thing to look at.
How would we lose money?
I mean, it'd depend the cost of, of buses, yeah.
The borrowing money, again.
Well, it's speculative, I mean, you could or you couldn't.
And I have a concern that at some point, and our fund balances it, whatever it's supposed to be, I, I have a concern, we do this and say, "Next year, we'll figure it out next year." next year, and what's our borrowing power going to be then?
I agree, Michelle.
I have a really big concern about that. Again, kids are displaced, we, we have it, we have to talk about construction, we have a whole lot of things to deal with, and what's our borrowing power?
I have one more item that I, I forgot to mention, uh, this also involves the possibility of not or reducing the use of RONIC buses. Uh, the more buses we have, and the more bus drivers we have, uh, we can eliminate or reduce that cost tremendously. Most of the RONIC runs are for out-of-district runs, but with the contract with them, we can't supply a bus and use their driver, nor can we use their bus and use our driver. When we use one of their buses, uh, the deal is we use their driver and their bus. So if we by any chance do have a few extra buses, and if, uh, as what was reported today is correct about Penn Hills changing their, uh, busing structure and us receiving a lot of applications for bus drivers, it may very well behoove us to have a few extra bus drivers and a few extra buses, and actually may pay for themselves, because we're spending a lot more than this every month on RONIC buses, because of certain factors like that, that, uh, I mean, just look at what, what our costs were this week to go down for the DC trip, and that wasn't RONIC buses, but we had to have RONIC buses to cover our buses. So, you know, like I said, there's, there's a lot, lot more involved, and if we need eight and we get fourteen, oh my, we've got six extra, and if we use three, oh, we're down to three extra, and oh my God, one broke down and didn't start today. It's not like, what, what's, what's the, the safe auto or something, bare minimum auto insurance? If we want to go bare minimum?
Rich, it's almost midnight.
I know, I'm tired, Bill.
I'm thinking, going to fall asleep.
All right, all right.
Sorry.
I just thought it was my turn.
Putting in perspective for you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to borrow the one million, eighty thousand dollars, uh, general obligation bond, Series B, to purchase fourteen new school buses. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Colletta?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Mrs. Rossler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Motion passes.
We could have done it in one.
Finance Committee met on May seventeenth, Mr. Colletta will make this report.
Um, thank you, Mr. Doc, Dr. Rossi, um, we're, we're going to have one more budget workshop to finalize, there's some things I think we need to tweak in this budget, this is a preliminary budget we passed tonight, so we're going to tweak it just a little bit. Um, there's some money in the Affordable Care Act that I want to make sure the board knows about, we have a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in there, um, that we may not need, uh, we're going to talk about how we can transfer that money around a little bit. Um, otherwise, a long-range plan is needed, if we don't have that, um, we're going to have issues, we need to make sure that we understand that, uh, so we're going to be up for a five-year strategic plan, starting in June. Hopefully, in June, we'll have our independent auditor come in and look at what the board wants to be reviewed, uh, and after that, we continue to look at our cash flow for our school district and making payroll, which has been, uh, unique to say the least. Um, the state just notified us that they're going to pay us three point six six million June the first, that's one day after we need the money for payroll. So we're, and we're going to have to, uh, do some creative things with that.
Do you, do you want to jump on that, Gene?
Um, Mr. Colletta, will I tell you what, uh, the conversation that, uh, we've had to clarify what we're doing? Um, the payroll is estimated, uh, to be just slightly north of about one point two million dollars, uh, for, uh, May thirty-first. Uh, currently, in, in our checking, uh, account, we have about a hundred and one thousand, over at, um, uh, Pisloff, we have about eight hundred and forty-three thousand, and we also have a CD that matures in November of two thousand seventeen at S and T for a million, two twelve. Uh, Mr. Price, myself, Jack Jacobs from, uh, S and T, and Donna Bensonhofer, the branch manager, have been discussing what's the, uh, most economical way for the district, um, to secure the funds, and then, uh, you know, when the three point six million comes in, to, uh, pay A, a loan, or reimburse the district. The bottom line is, it would be a lot more economical for the district to cash the CD that's getting point, um, oh, oh, four, five percent interest, then borrow money, pay the, uh, the bank fees, which is usually around five percent. Uh, the bank agrees that that's the best way, Mr. Jacobs, Lee, and I all agree that that's the absolute best way to do it. So we would cash that CD, and the bank would honor that rate, because it's going from S and T into S and T, we're not taking it out and placing with P and C, and they're working with us, I mean, they've been very gracious, um, understanding, you know, what, what our cash flow situation is, like Mr. Colletta says, it's one day. But that one day, uh, on my end, means I have to have the money in there on Friday to twenty-seventh, because Tuesday, Monday's a holiday, it's not a banking day. So the rule is, we have to have it in two days in advance, for the direct deposits to be put in everybody's account, so at, um, the stroke of midnight on, uh, Monday going into Tuesday, everybody would get paid.
Gene, can I get a ProSOFT report, please, up to date of everything we've gotten from the state? Can I please get that?
Yes.
For all the board members, and what, and what we're yet owed?
I wanted to, I, I, my point is, our state representative has asked that he could help us to try to make sure we're, everything is where it's...
In fact, I, I have that with me tonight, and of course, it doesn't include the three point six, because that won't come through the, before we leave, I can make you all copy of it, I do have a...
You could even just scan it and send it to me tomorrow, so I can order it on, and they can, they can go to PD and make sure we're...
You want the state funds, which is the seven thousand series.
Right, everything we've gotten.
Okay.
Same thing like I brought to Harrisburg, just, I know it's sort of, you know, their red line of they owe us thirteen million, so, you know, something similar to that.
Yeah, if we could all get a copy of that, that would be great.
Yes, I will send it to everyone.
Once they pay us the three point six six million, they're going to owe us about four point eight million dollars.
Four point eight, thank you.
Yeah, I want to say off the top of my head, currently, it's about eight point three million they owe us, uh, that's accounting for everything that they have paid us, and, uh, like Mr. Colletta, if you deduct the three point six, that, that's where you're at.
And you have to remember, our cash flow starts in July, in August, when Mr. Schlegel sends his taxes receipts out, so we get a big inflow of cash in those months, so we now have to make sure we have enough money to get us through. Because we backpay the teachers, July and August is in this fiscal year, not next fiscal year. So even though they're paid after the end of our fiscal year, June thirtieth, they're paid in July and August, that money is booked in this fiscal year, so you have to have that money available.
So then we'll reinvest, um, that, that one point, at the same rate?
Right, and, and if it's short-term, if we, if, you know...
It would be.
But then remember, we got to pay them at June fifteenth, payroll, June nineteenth, uh, the Allegheny County Healthcare Consortium, that's about a half a million dollars, so you got one point two, and you got a half a million, and at the end of the month, you got another one point two. So you're looking at two point nine million, just for that, plus the bills that you have, uh, you know, fuel and other insurances and so on, so, um, you know, they're, they're just, you know, just giving us crumbs to barely, uh, make it through each month. But we will.
Thank them for working with us at S and T.
Yes.
Would you please?
We, we've said that to them, like I say, Mr. Price and I have had a lot of conversation with them, and we, we collectively agree that that's the absolute most economical way to go.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Colletta?
No, I, I guess there was a question from a citizen talking about lost money, there was no lost money. Uh, our auditor will go through that in June when we talk about that. And as for a new school, there's always a value proposition that we have to have, this board should change the value proposition as it goes through its iterations of yearly things. Um, and the thing is, you know, you, you have to look at, you know, we always look at class size, is, is it right to have two teachers for twenty-seven kindergarten students, one with fourteen and one with thirteen in a class? I mean, these are all things that the board's going to have to decide for, for not this year, but the following year. And those are going to be hard decisions, really hard decisions, but, uh, you know, I, I just think we just have to be diligent and be proactive and understand that value propositions, propositions change. That's all I have.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Mrs. Vicky Rossler, Chair, recommend adoption of the following policies as listed. That's policy number six twenty-six, six twenty-six point one, eight zero eight, and eight twenty-seven.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommend adoption of the new consolidated Section three hundred series, which replaces the three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred series, all employee sections have been merged from three sections to one.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policy Committee met on May third, May tenth, May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, Mrs. Rossler will make a report.
I just, I have a quick report, we are finished, I believe, combining the administration, professional classified section into one, um, section, that'll be the three hundred series. Um, they were reviewed by the board, the solicitor, and recommendations by the Plumborough School Board Association. Um, we were looking at some policies, policies last month, eight twenty-four, um, excluding policy three oh four, with, which a lot of our citizens spoke about tonight, regarding that eighteen to twenty-two-year-old, which I, I do not support, so I hope, um, maybe between now and next month, we can really think about if that's the right direction we want to go in and prohibit eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds from participating.
Agreed.
So, I, I, like I said, I'm strongly against that.
June twenty-first.
Which, June twenty-first?
Committee of the whole.
The committee of the whole, okay, yeah, please, please take a, that's all I have, thank you.
Safe and supportive schools committee, Mrs. Vicky Rossler, Chair, recommend approval to accept the agreement with D'Agostino Electronic Services for district cameras and software as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any discussion?
Could be paid out of GOB money?
Yeah, how are we going to pay for this?
I've got a few questions, how are we going to pay for it, and are we including Old Holiday Park?
Absolutely, I was told yes.
Can you give us, can you give us the citizens a description if they aren't familiar with it? Like what all it covers? That's because of the question with Holiday Park.
Mike, Mr. Brewer, do you have the information about the cameras?
I didn't blame them.
Which buildings?
Which buildings they cover?
I might have it somewhere.
Mr. Burkey had interviewed numerous vendors, and the most competent vendor with, would be compatible with our system, came back with a approximate cost of, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, I believe.
Two oh nine, six fifty.
Is that correct, Mr. Burkey?
Two, two oh nine.
Two oh nine.
Which buildings?
That includes Holiday Park, is that correct, Chris?
Old Holiday Park.
Old Holiday Park, yes.
He said Old Holiday Park, yes. Old Holiday Park?
Where Regency's located.
Regency.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe he said that at the committee meeting.
So that is, that covers all of our schools and grounds?
Yes.
And we already have buses taken care of?
That is correct.
Oh, the cameras on the buses, yeah.
Yeah.
Cameras, sorry.
So that is a, that is a guarantee that...
It's late, sorry.
That is a guarantee that the Regency students will have these cameras in their school.
Yes.
For the two oh nine, okay.
We will double-check that tomorrow.
They visited that building, Chris Burkey went there personally with those vendors.
I don't see why we'd exclude that school.
Because originally we were.
But I remember at the committee meeting, we talked about it, and they said there were cameras in the school, so I'm thinking we're okay. Better be.
Double-check that, or we'll hold off.
Do we need to...
Mr. Burkey, once again, you did visit Holiday Park.
Old.
Where Regency is located presently, and the cost was included with the cameras at that facility. Once again, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brewer.
You're welcome.
Are they motion activated? Does anybody know?
I think so, I think I asked that question, and I think they are active, uh, motion activated.
And they record, so there'll, there'll be a, a video record of activity? Is there a cutoff on that? I apologize, I was in surgery.
There was, yeah, yeah, I don't think you were there, but there was, what is it?
Just to enlighten the record.
Did he say like a month of recording?
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure, Sue.
So there's a his, a certain history that we can make?
Digitally recorded, so I think it depends on, like, you know, hard disk space or something like that.
Inside and outside?
Yeah, and I don't, I think they're different.
And then, um, you know, night they're not running, when there's no, nothing going on, it's motion sensitive.
Okay.
So it's, it's not recording, you know, park space.
Right, okay.
Unless someone's, you know, in the building at that hour.
Is the parking lot also? I'm just curious. Is the parking lot also? And Mr. Brewer might have.
Michael, is the parking lot?
I believe certain cameras will pick up areas within the parking lot.
I don't know how extensive, since we have large parking lots.
We do, right.
Yes, but I don't think it's going to cover every single foot.
I think the entrance or anything.
And I remember at the committee, um, that you weren't there, the committee meeting, we went over this, and I, I don't think anyone had any objections to any of this.
No, I don't have any objections, I'm just trying, you know, because we're publicized so the citizens will know what we're doing for, because we are doing things, uh, the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee has been very active and proactive over the last, um, year and a half. So I just wanted to make sure the community knew what you're working hard on, I think it's great.
Thank you, Sue.
We have seven, three hundred seventy-one thousand in two thousand thirteen series, I think, Gene? Can you check and see if we can use that for that?
I did check with Mr. Cliff Bastell, and he said that that money can only be used for items that have a useful life of twenty years, which, such as a building. Now, um, I mean, if you put, uh, cameras on the building, you know, you can't, I'll double-check, but I don't think you can say the camera has a useful life, because it's attached to a forty, your useful life, but I'll check on that tomorrow with Mr. Cliff Bastell, and I will, uh, send an email out to the board.
If that doesn't work, do we have another way to pay for them?
Yeah, we can use the GOB money to pay the interest on the loan, Lee, I think. You're still, you're still down to the useful life question. Well, I thought if we paid the interest on our debt with that three seventy-one, that would free up...
Free up, that's a different, yeah, I see.
That would free up-
You're doing it around.
Round away, yeah.
'Cause we really need cameras.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay.
Oh, I agree.
Did I, did I make a motion? Did someone second?
I have a motion and a second.
Thank you, okay.
Said it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Safe and supportive schools committee met on May third, two thousand and sixteen. Mrs. Rossler will make this report.
Actually, I thought we, you know, May, May third, we did meet. A big announcement that I have is Tips by AWARE-It is live. Phone number's four one two seven nine eight tips, or it's on the Plum Borough School District website. The citizens group met. As always, I thank them for their dedication. I also thank the board members, Michelle Gallagher, Sal Kalella, Steve Schlock, and Jim Rogers for their commitment to the committee too. The past year, they've been valuable coming as board members and, and working with the citizens. And that's it. I look forward to meeting again next fall with the committee.
Vicki, just wanna say one thing. In the budget, the safety coordinator position is not funded. So if, if the board wishes on the twenty-first, when we meet, the meeting of the whole, you have to decide to put that in for sure. We put in two hundred and seventy-five thousand in contingency funds, so there is money in the contingency fund if you wanna fund that. But that's, that has to be a board decision.
I, I'm worried about that committee and the whole, because I think we have a lot of things with safety to work on this summer. And I'm just afraid that's gonna be a long meeting, and you know how it is at the end, we just rush through things. Is there any way?
Well, if you want, I'll put it on my budget workshop agenda.
Yeah, okay.
You can do it on my budget workshop.
Okay.
And then finalize it at the end of the month.
Okay.
I do think we can't lose sight of the two S R Os in addition to, if we read the end of the DA's report, he actually cited some things that Plum has done right. And then that was that we add an additional S R O into our buildings. And those cannot fall by the wayside. So, again, that, that was the one thing, I mean, he cited some things we've done right, and that was certainly one of them. And other things we've done, but that was certainly one of them. And I don't wanna lose sight of that. I would like the safety coordinator to be in addition to, to S R Os.
And I'm, and I'm actually not against that. The only reason we did not put it on the agenda is we didn't discuss it at committee level. But I do know, we are paying two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for two S R Os. And I did reach out to a neighboring school district who has two S R Os, and they're paying a hundred thousand dollars. And they laughed at me when they said, "You're paying what?" So, yeah. So I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that. We can talk about that at the committee level, too.
Those are, those are their contracts. Those are, we don't control their contracts.
Well, we didn't accept that.
Right.
But can we, didn't Gateway have to put security in all their buildings?
They're having their own school police in the buildings, yeah. It's known, it's actually a school police they're setting up for, just like Butler School District. Every school has a school police.
Well, this is for the committee discussion.
Yeah, so we can, we can talk about that later, but I'm not saying I disagree with you, Michelle, on that.
And we were praised for something good.
Committee.
I mean, there was nothing really good in that report, and we were praised for something good, and I would, you know.
Well, we'll talk about that at my committee. Hopefully you can either, we can talk. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Mr. Jim Rogers, Chair. The Transportation Committee did not meet this month. Mr. Rogers will make a report.
Yeah, I've already stated everything I wanted to make in a report regarding the buses and all, so that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Athletic Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Chair, recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year as listed. Just wanted to clarify that this does include-
We did have an addendum on there.
Yes, we have an addition.
Oh, yes, we have.
We missed the, the number one.
Okay. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Michael Wallace, JV baseball coach, retroactive to May twelfth, two thousand and sixteen.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following list of coaches for the fall two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year at the contracted rate. And just wanted to make a clarification, that did include Zach Martin, senior high varsity assistant coach, number six.
Yes.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to award athletic bids to respective vendors who represent the lowest responsible bidders as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Some of this discussion was the, oh no, this wasn't, this wasn't the vendor one. The next one's the, the posters. No discussion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the agreement with big game promotions for athletic posters, schedules as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to add one additional paid assistant cross-country coach at a stipend of two thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. An M O U will be created if this is approved.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add that Coach I did come and give a presentation to us at the athletic committee meeting. And, you know, one of the numbers that really shot out to me was the athlete to coach, coach ratio at the senior high was twenty-five to one. And, and that was including both male and female with forty-nine athletes. I mean, when you look at someone around the same for like softball at forty-five, the ratio's fifteen to one. So I moved this forward.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the coach you're looking at is a, a female teacher at the, at the high school, I believe. So, right now, it's all men coaches, so I think it'll give the girls somebody to kinda look up to, you know, another, another female. So I think that, I think that'd be a good addition.
I think the way Coach I on it presented it, it really made me think that it's a safety issue. If he has a runner go down, and he's the only coach, then you have twenty-four other runners unattended. Well, he's attending to the runner who's hurt. So I, I see it as a safety issue, and, and I'll vote for that.
How many do we have now?
Two.
We have two.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, there was one.
I had a no.
There was one name.
One. Recommend approval to add a grade, grade seven and eight slow pitch softball program beginning in the fall of two thousand and sixteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. Just to, we had a presentation by Greg Bohatch. This is a self-funded program beginning in the fall of two thousand and sixteen. The only thing that he did request from our district was uniforms. And Bob Alpino, our athletic director, did tell him that they would be able to use some of the used, you know, uniforms that we've had before. So, that's the only thing. So this is self-funded.
Great.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Athletic Committee met on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mrs. Gallagher will make, make a report.
Yes. First and foremost, I would like the community to know that the baseball team won tonight, and we are twenty-two-
Wow, congratulations.
-undefeated. Twenty-two and zero, so that's great news.
Stay tuned.
That was a bit of great news this evening, so I just wanted to get that out there. I wanted to remind everybody in the community about the upcoming fall sports physicals. They will be starting on Monday, June sixth, at the high school. Senior high physicals begin at seven thirty A.M., and the junior high physicals begin at nine. Please visit the website. Sections five and six of the physical form must be completed and returned to the nurse's office. You know, please access the family I D link if you, you know, you are new to this. You know, you're really gonna have to go to the web and look at everything for upcoming people in the junior high and in the high school, and the freshmen that are considering. I wanted to also make note that the track team has three runners that have qualified for the P I A A championship meet later this week. Best of luck to Ashley Amato, Jake Susula, and Rachel Velata at the state track meet. Another note of recommendation, I mean, of accommodation is Plum's own baseball player, Alex Kreloff, has been named Gatorade's Baseball Player of the Year for Pennsylvania. So that's huge. He is also in the running for the National Player of the Year, so hopefully we'll get some good news there. And again, you know, I have reached out, and I know I'll, I'll talk probably more in finance about, you know, working on fine tuning the budget right now and seeing everything that has totaled, and working with Bob a little bit and seeing if there's any flexibility. But I'm working on it in my committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Mrs. Michelle Steffen, Nick Chair. The Food Service and Nutrition Committee met on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Mrs. Steffen will make this report.
Yes, I'll, I'll be brief tonight. I will say, first today, I'm gonna start off with the positive, another positive today. Dr. Rossi and I, and Dr. Glasspool, and Jessica Griggle, and, and some others, and, and Dr. Yuminsky, we were able to judge the Red Bull contest at Pivik. It was really cool. It was, the entire school was there. It was, I think, more than we thought it was gonna be. It was very fun. The talent was amazing. Our little chefs are, they're gonna go places. Their recipes were great, and it was very difficult to choose. So that was a fun part of our day today, and I congratulate our winner. We did meet on, on May tenth, and we discussed, there's always been conversation about a contribution from food service to the general fund budget. And Jessica had just recently gone to a, a conference and gotten some information about how that works. And basically, if, 'cause it's federally subsidized, if we give food service a, a formula, I guess if you will, that we agree upon in the school district, we then have to do it for special ed and, and through some others. So I'm not exactly sure how we can go about doing that. But there are some federal regulations on that piece. So we talked about that some. I think information was given to the board and for further discussion. And in addition, we just discussed the balances that are past due. And parents get that in because, you know, we will have to take it to the magistrate and wanna have to go through that. So we did talk about that. But it seems as if the April fifteenth, kids aren't having food taken away from them since we changed that procedure. And kids are eating, and we'll, we'll deal with the other part as it comes. But at least we're not taking food out of children's hands, which was a, a big thing for the change for the school year. That's it.
I, I have a quick question. When, when do you go to the magistrate? What month?
I think that, Michael, you can clarify. There was a process, like the parents are starting to get notified via letter and phone call. And then it's looking at the, the amount that there is and, and that kind of thing. Michael has more of the process. And, and I believe, like, it looks like we're, it looks like usually towards the end of the school year, everybody pays what they owe. I mean, that's what, where it seems-
The only reason right now-
Besides a minor amount. I mean, it seems like we are kind of-
Correct. Unfortunately, we're incurring more costs this year than we have in the previous five years. We're almost at four thousand dollars. And we're hoping to turn that around quickly here at the end of the year. But we're on the second phone call home, and we are almost at the point now where we're gonna be sending out those registered letters.
Is that to meet the magistrate, or just a registered letter to let them know they owe money?
Correct. The registered letter will notify them that this will be your last notice before we would take you to the magistrate.
Do you, my thought is, during the summer, you're not putting money into that bank 'cause the kids aren't eating lunch at school. So I didn't know if there was a chance, instead of sending them to the magistrate, you could not get them on a payment plan to try to get caught up?
The school district has to do that, not food service. That's what was explained to us. We have to, this, our fund ten has to make food service whole, and then we have to absorb whatever that is, however we wanna handle that. Like, we can decide to do something different, too. But there's different ways of making it work. But right now, food service doesn't go after that after June thirtieth. It becomes our fund ten, and the administration goes out.
So we can do that. My concern is charging them that eight, ninety dollars. You know, I was always concerned about that, because if they don't have money to pay for their lunches, or, or just whatever, I, I just don't wanna charge them another ninety dollars. I mean, that's just not a win. You know, maybe we can work, make an arrangement.
When we called the magistrate, it was ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money, Michael, you know, to charge somebody to come and say, you know, you're not, so I-
And when I spoke to the director today, we were gonna look at each case individually.
Okay.
And then hopefully, like I said, with this last mailing and the numerous phone calls, we're gonna hopefully turn that around quickly.
Yeah, maybe they can make payments and get caught up before school starts.
And that's something I think we can work on differently. But, and then also, Jessica did mention that her little bit new creativity and the free and reduced breakfast portion, she's done some various things here in this building, and I think working through some things in the high school as well. And we're seeing a higher reimbursement. Again, the food's being purchased, it's just being wasted if they don't come and buy it or utilize it. So she's been able to do some creative things here, and hopefully we'll start to see that. And then after National Breakfast Week, again, that, there's gonna rise in that. And really, it's been on the reimbursement side for the free and reduced, so.
She's done an excellent job-
Heading in the right direction. It takes time to-
Sure.
-get comfortable here and get moving and, and go in another direction. So it takes time.
Yeah, she's implementing new strategies and-
Sure, she's done a great job.
Foods as well throughout the district. She's doing an excellent job with her inventory management as well, reducing costs and increasing revenue.
So my question is, since it's twenty after twelve, is, will you let us know what dollar amount you're gonna be going to the magistrate to collect? Is there gonna, is it like a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars? Like, is there a specific amount?
We left the meeting today at the agreement that we're gonna meet probably at the end of the week after those mailings have gone out, and then make that decision.
Yeah, okay. If you could just kinda let me know. I'm just really concerned about that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's really, it's really not a lot of money, when you think about it. If you do two million dollars worth of gross receipts, like I think they probably do, four thousand dollars, that means that she's collected ninety-nine point eight percent of her money. So they're really doing a good job.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. Thank you. I'm trying. Yeah. I'm sorry to hold everybody up.
That's it, go, go ahead.
Intergovernmental Committee, Mrs. Susan Caldwell, Chair. The Intergovernmental Committee did not meet this month. Forbes Road Career and Techno, Technology Center, Mr. Jim Rogers, Representative, recommend approval to accept the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center's two thousand and sixteen, seventeen operating and administration budget as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Their budget's actually about three percent less the projected budget than it was this year. So they're, they're cutting their costs quite a bit.
Yeah, I think when we went through the open house, they were conscious of the, all the school districts' budgets and tried to, you know, reduce their budget this year.
Is enrollment steady? Enrollment, Jim, do you, did they say, is it down?
Somewhere around seven hundred kids.
Is that up or down, did they say?
It, down a wee bit, because-
Kind of explain it.
Well, Wilkinsburg-
Right.
Is sending their kids to the Westinghouse in the city.
Right.
So they, they lost those.
They only had one or two there.
They, they, Wilkinsburg only had a few kids there to begin with.
Right.
That's about right. I didn't, I did not get to the last meeting, because we had a, a budget workshop that night. But there's a meeting on Thursday, which I will be attending, so. And the other thing, well, let's, let's do this first.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Two seconds.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Rogers will make a report.
Yeah, just one quick comment. Tomorrow's the commencement for Forbes, and it's gonna be held at Gateway High School. And the other thing, they still have some openings for the, uh, uh, science camp that they wanna run out there for ages fourteen to eighteen. So if there's anyone, you know, that might be interested, you know, it's a good deal.
Summer camp.
That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Representative. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
Yes, real brief. They are testing the soil in the back of the school for the possibility of their new vocational program. They were looking at to do some type of gardening vocation over there for the students at Sunrise. Their intercom system is failing, and it's going to need replaced. Talked at length about that. And their security cameras are not working as well. So there is a lot of discussion about what they would want to do with all of that. No definite answers on that. But the Sunrise graduation is scheduled for Wednesday, June eighth. I hope to attend.
Wow.
Legislative Policy Council, Mrs. Michelle Steffen, Representative.
I don't have a report.
No report. President's Report, Mr. Kevin Dowdell.
Thank you, Dr. Rossi. First, I wanna thank everyone involved with making the sixth grade DC trip a success in spite of the failure of the busing company to provide the buses that were requested. I've heard some feedback, and even the kids that rode on the school buses had, had a, a great time. Also, last week, we, I attended the scholarship awards ceremony, and I congratulated all the recipients of the scholarships. The total dollar amount, I didn't get the exact figure, but it's somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars we gave out in scholarships last week to our students to continue on further education. And there are also some military scholarships as well.
There's a military scholarship in there that was well over four hundred thousand.
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, I believe.
That was huge. It's pretty amazing.
So, so they, they, the students made out pretty well. As the school year winds down, I'd like to thank all the individuals who volunteered their time, talents, to help their students learn and grow. Whether you assisted in our P T A, coached our athletes, worked behind the scenes for our drama or musical departments, or assisted at school celebrations, or extra efforts enhanced the, the school experience for our children and young adults. Thank you for your efforts. They do not go unnoticed. Okay, on June second, we will celebrate the graduation of the class two thousand and sixteen. I am extremely proud of their collective success, both in and outside of the classroom, and look forward to hearing about their, their future accomplishments. And I wish to thank all the students and their families a restful and safe summer. Some upcoming events, June third is the last day of school. June seventh is Kennywood Picnic Day. June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is Plum Community Days at Larry Mills Park. July twenty-third is Stampede in the Park at Boyce Park Ski Lodge. And on August twenty-ninth is the first day of school for the sixteen, And on August twenty-ninth is the first day of school for the sixteen seventeen school year, so I'm sure all the students are looking for that date.